That's what was happening. Okay. Check, check. Hey, hey, hey. Yeah, 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 yeah. Things are sounding, ooh, yeah, I got a bad cable in here and all kinds of fun stuff today. Alright, uh, oh, crunchy, crunchy, crunchy. So crunchy. What is happening today? Anyway, um, what, how do I start the show? Um, bonjour tout le monde, bonjour chers amis, je m'appelle Skylar et Uh, vous êtes regardés un nouveau épisode de mon programme, Skylar Learns French. Sky- oh wait, no, it's this one. Skylar learns French, yes he does. Hold on, hold on, let's do that again. Let's get some reverb on that. Skylar learns French, yes he does. Do y'all like the somberness? Uh, somber, somber, kinda melancholy? Skylar learns French, yes he does. And go a little bit like. Skylar learns French, yes he does. I don't know. We gotta come up with a better theme song. Okay, uh, bonjour. Uh, uh, hey guys, how's it going? Um, my name is Skylar. Uh, I am a part of Sweet Crude. Um, I am on a thirty day challenge to practice French every single day. Um, today is day fourteen. We have made it. Two weeks. Two full weeks. You know, uh, what do they say? Two weeks is a habit. Um, so I think we did it. Uh, I feel, feel like it's a habit. Feel a little crazy, to be honest. Um, also, I had a good method going and then somebody called out my book and said my book was dumb. So I'm now switching methods. So it's two weeks, but I'm really on day two of a new book, new method. Um, so things are weird and, and interesting and fun all at the same time. Um, okay, so here's the practice for the day. Um, we've switched over to learning little kid books. I've got this book. It's called Three Hundred Moes. Uh, that's trois cents? I think that's right. Trois cents, right? Three hundred. And then moe is the word for word, uh, if you're a really beginner. So trois cents, moe. Okay. And then chercher, trouver, euh, couler. So this is a coloring book. Coule, couler, 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 something. Couler, couler. Um, so this is a, this is a coloring book. How cute, right? Um, but here's the thing is if, um, little kids have to know these words or they get taught these words, uh, I should know them. Uh, because I need to be smarter than a little kid. So, um, we're gonna, we're gonna go through and learn these words. Um, I, we went through it yesterday. And I think the best way to do this today, I think, is to go through, read them with the pictures, maybe get, associate the pictures in my brain. And then I've made flashcards and maybe we can, um, test out my brain's memory. Um, sound good? Okay, let's, let's do it. Uh, let's jump over to this camera. Okay. Yeah. Dropping my camera. Uh, cool. Things are fun. Okay. Um, the first word is une chaussière, chaussière, chaussière. I'm gonna check the pronunciations in a minute when I go to the flashcards. Um, but chaussière is shoes. Des lunettes, uh, glasses. Une, une pomme, this is an apple. Uh, une revier, revier. Uh, this is a clock or an alarm clock. Uh, I'm gonna move my microphone over, cause I forget to do this every time. Uh, and turn on this lamp. Maybe this lamp will help on some of this stuff. This is a little bit brighter here. Yeah, there we go. This, this, things are, things are just looking up. Okay, now. Une bonhomme de neige, it's a snowman. And then une sac à main. Un sac à main. Un, un sac à main. Okay. Um, great. That's fun. Now. Un requin, requin? A queen. We're gonna have to check that guy. Uh, that's a shark. I think that's a shark. Maybe it's dolphin. No, it's a shark. Um, une serviette. It's, it looks like a towel. We're at a beach scene. You can see like little, little guys over here. Maybe we should talk about these things. Like play a little game of iSpy when we have all these vocabulary words down. Uh, des, des pommes, des pommes. This is a, um, flippers. Une, un ballon. This is a beach ball or ball. Une tarte, turtle, little cute little turtle guy. Une banane. Une, un, un platon. I've got a really bad habit that I'm trying to break myself of right now, right now, is un versus une. Un. And I tend to want to read un as une or closer to it. So you will hear me probably messing that up a ton over the next couple of days. Uh, hopefully I can correct it. Okay, un platon, plant, plant, pantalon. Oh, there we go. Un pantalon. It's closer to like pantalones, right? These are swim trunks or trunks or pants, trousers, something like that. Uh, des sandals, uh, sandals, sandals. We'll check the pronunciation. Uh, un lapin. It's a rabbit. Un shampoing. This looks like shampooing, um, but don't say that. Un shampoing, or something closer to that, uh, but it is shampoo. Uh, un mal, malo, malo? Un mail, mail, lo, de menthe. I guess this is a bathing suit. Un canard et un parasol. Okay, parasol's wrong. That's the wrong pronunciation. Before we go on, this is not a good study method. I'm, I'm not happy with what's happening. We're gonna go over to my, my, uh, flashcards here and I, cause I really do wanna get the pronunciation right. So, um, let's start back at the beginning. Um, let's make sure that you guys can see what I'm seeing. Okay, this is gonna feel a little bit better for me. Uh, let's listen to this word. Chaussière, une chaussière. Okay, this is a, these are, uh, shoes? Une chaussière. Oh, it's one shoe, right? That makes sense. Uh, des lunettes.
Des lunettes.
Des lunettes, des lunettes. These are sunglasses. No, just glasses. Just glasses in this case. Une pomme, this is an apple.
Une pomme.
Everyone who's ever downloaded Duolingo knows what this word is. It's like the first word, then they drill it. If you don't know this, you're, you're gonna know it. Uh, une revier.
Un réveil.
Uh, un, I did it again. Un revier. Réve.
Un réveil.
Un réveil, réveil.
Un réveil.
Réve, un réve. Okay, uh, and what is this again? Réve. This is the alarm clock? Un réve. I don't know, what is the root here? Why is this mean alarm clock?
Un réve.
Réve. It's like, I wanna say like rêve, like it's the dream waker? Okay, um, une bonnehomme de neige. Bonhomme de neige. Un bonhomme de neige.
Un bonhomme de neige.
Un bonhomme de neige. This is a snowman. Un sac à main.
Un sac à main.
Okay, this is a purse or a handbag. Great. Un racon.
Un requin.
Racon, racon.
Un requin.
Racon, un requin, un requin. Um, this is a shark. Un requin. I saw in the definition that this guy, uh, can also mean like an actual person, like a sharky type person. I really wanna know what, how that's translated, cause that sounds really interesting. Don't wanna be a shark. Okay. Une serviette.
Une serviette.
Une serviette. This is a towel. Des pommes, des pommes, des pommes.
Des palmes.
Palm, des palmes, palm.
Des palmes.
Palm. It's a little bit more nasally than I wanna make it. Uh, des palmes. These are flippers. Des palmes. Une banane.
Une banane.
Une banane. Un, un. Ah! I've, I have created a really bad habit. Un. Un, uh, pantalon.
Un pantalon.
Pont, pantalon. Un pantalon. Pants, trousers. Des sa, sandals.
Des sandales.
Sandals, des sandals. Sandals, des sandals. Uh, un lapin, lapin. Un lapin.
Un lapin.
Un lapin. This is a rabbit. Yay. Un shampoing.
Un shampoing.
Shamp, uh, there is a little bit of shamp. Un, un shampoing. Let's see.
Un shampoing.
Shampoing. Un shampoing. Uh, and this is un shampoing, but then the translation is shampoo. It's like, it's a shampoo? Can I get a shampoo? Uh, I guess that just helps us know this is masculine for now? I don't know. We'll figure it out. Something for later. Un mello, mello de bain.
Un maillot de bain.
Uh, maillot. I was closer the first time. Un maillot de bain, un maillot de bain. Uh, swimsuit? Bathing suit. Un maillot de bain. Uh, you know, like sale de bain. That makes sense? Um, un canard. Un canard, une canne. This is a duck?
Un canard, une canne.
Une canne. Male duck, female duck? Un par, parasol.
Un parasol.
Parasol. Uh, beach umbrella. Ooh. Um, okay, cool. I like this better than the book, to be honest. Um, I guess the book is nice for like pictures, word association, pictures. Okay, let's jump back to the book. For this next section. So, this next section has a superhero. There's a giraffe. There's a flower. It looks like there's a seagull. We've got a ladder. We've got a donut. Butterfly. Little parachute dude. Uh, a leaf, a hippopotamus, a bone, a rocket ship, and a balloon animal, but I think, I think this is just a balloon, is what they're trying to say. Okay, so I don't work well in this method, cause I like to hear the word, so I'm, that was a fun little detour, but now we're gonna go back here. Ah, okay. Um, uh, superhero.
Un superhéros.
Uh, superhero. That's fun to say. Un superhero.
Un superhéros.
Superhéros. Superhero. Un superhero. Um, une girafe, right?
Une girafe.
Girafe, une girafe. Une fleur.
Une fleur.
Une fleur. This is flower. Uh, une muette. What is a muette again?
Une muette.
Muette is the seagull. Seagull. Muette. A muette is a seagull. Une échelle. There's a missing accent here, for some reason. Échelle. Let's, let's fix that. Échelle. Cool.
Une échelle.
Une échelle, une échelle. These are, this is a ladder. Une échelle. Okay. Un beignet.
Un beignet.
We know what a beignet is. This is a donut. Un beignet. Un papillon. This is a butterfly. Un parachute.
Un parachute.
Parachute. Cool. Alright, feeling good. Parachute. Um, une feuille. Feuille. Um, Scribd says the voice, French voice translator person is not reliable all the time. I totally believe you. Um, yeah, the challenges of learning by yourself. But at least it would get me closer, I guess. Better than what I'm doing, right?
Une feuille.
Une feuille, feuille. Okay, une feuille. Uh, this is a leaf, right? Yeah. Une feuille. Un hippopotame, hippopotame.
Un hippopotame.
Uh, hippopotame. That's a fun one to say. It's like a ketchup, rubber. Hip, hippopotame. Cool. A hippopotamus, which in English is a really fun word to say. Hippopotamus. Hippopotame. Okay. Anos.
Anos.
Anos. Uh, okay, this is a bone. Anos. Une fusée.
Une fusée.
Fusée. This is a rocket ship. Un ballon. This is a balloon. Okay, well, that's the end of that. That's cool. Ah, man, vocabulary words are not fun. It's like, this is like, this is like actually work? It's like really annoying. Okay, um, I'm gonna show some little kids up so hard. They aren't, they aren't gonna know what hit 'em. I'm gonna like know way more words than them. Okay, let's go on to this next page. Um, I guess this, this method kinda works. Ah, book's falling. Uh, let's go to the book, read through the things, see the pictures, and then come back. That's, that's kinda a cool way to do it. Uh, un panda, un panda. Guess it's that. Uh, des, uh, cer, cérceaux, cer, cer, cér, cérseaux. Uh, these are cherries, it looks like. Um, infochette, we know that one. Une trottoirnette, trottoirnette. Hmm, okay, is a scooter or something? A tricycle scooter or something? Uh, un, un escargot, un escargot. Snails. Snail. People eat snails. Why? Um, une poubelle. It's a trash can. Une poubelle. Uh, da 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 na, des, des frites. Uh, du, du, frites? You know, you guys know like steak frites, right? Steak fries, steak frite. Uh, this is des frites, french fries. Um, made with pomme de terre. Okay, um, une verre, un verre, un verre. Sorry, 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 sorry. I'm so sorry. Un verre. It's a worm. What's the difference between like a verre and a verre? You know, like a glass, verre, glass, and a verre worm? They're just, you know, like two and two in English? Is that just what happens? Okay. Une glace. This is ice cream. Uh, une casserole, 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 casserole. I don't think it's cass-a-rol like we use, casserole. Um, this is a frying pan, I guess? A pan? Pot, pan? Une boîte repas. So this is a, a box lunch, like a lunchbox. A blok, a, what? A boit for lunch. Uh, cool. Boit, repas. Oh, repas. I don't know. I think it's no s. Okay. Un dix, un dix. This is dice. And then Un helicoptère, helicoptère. Oh, you can't see that. Helicoptère. Okay, let's see how, how close I was. Uh, according to the robot voice.
Un panda.
Un panda. That's pretty close. Uh, okay, I'm, I definitely messed this one up.
Des cerises.
Cerises. Des cerises. Ah, très très bon. Cerises. Uh, cherries are delicious. It's a délicieux. Uh, du, du, une pochette. This is a fork. We know that one. Une trottoirnette.
Une trottoirnette.
Trottoirnette. Trop. Kinda trottoirnette. Um, this is, what do they say? A scooter? Okay. Une trottoirnette. Une escargot.
Un escargot.
Uh, god. Ah! Day fourteen. Let's keep going. Uh, escargot. Une poubelle. Uh, this is a, a poubelle mushroom. This is a trash can. Une poubelle. Uh, des frites, french fries. Un verre, a worm. Oh wait, yeah, I'm supposed to be checking the pronunciation. Un verre. Une glace.
Une glace.
This is, uh, une glace. This, that's ice cream. Une casserole.
Une casserole.
Casserole, casserole. So we kinda swallow that e, apparently. Une, une boîte repas.
Une boîte repas.
Une boite, repas. A lunchbox. Indi, un, un dix. Oh my god, I'm freaking out right now. Addie.
Addie.
Addie. Uh, you know, in music, when you're like practicing and you make the same mistake over and over and over, they, you're, you're supposed to stop. You're supposed to just like walk away. You're like, you're doing more harm at this point. You're like solidifying a really bad habit. Uh, it's not good. Un dix.
Un dix.
Dice. Uh, un helicoptère.
Un helicoptère.
Helicoptère, helicoptère.
Un helicoptère.
Un helicoptère, un helicoptère. Okay. An helicoptère. Mom! Regardez, regardez, un helicoptère! Mom. I didn't say mom. Mama! Me, me. Okay, I'm losing it today. Um. Um, Marshall says, I'd be down to FaceTime Learn avec moi. Uh, I'd be down to, uh, FaceTime Learn avec toi. Um, heck yeah. I think we're on the same level. Um, I actually, and Sam came on the show a couple of weeks ago. A couple, jeez. It was two days ago. And, um, Uh, we decided that we need to have more tutelage on this show, uh, which is good. It's all great. I think this is really fun. So we're gonna, but we're gonna try to mix things up and have some teachers come in and kind of check progress, and so we'll have like a little back and forth happening too. So this won't be so one-sided and frustrating for everybody. Un tigre. Un tigre, une tigresse. A tiger, or a tigress. Uh, wait, we already went, oh, helicopter was the last one. Great, yay! Okay, well, this has been annoying today. Um, oh my god, and I didn't even switch over to the thing. You guys have to let me know. Supposed to be, I'm just a mess today. Okay, well, here's, here's, we're gonna finish with something fun. Yesterday, we started with our little, uh, petit poulet. So we're listening to the story of Chicken Little, Petit Poulet. Um, I think we'll just listen to where we left off yesterday and then we'll get into, um, breaking it down.
Petit poulet. Petit poulet vit dans une petite maison de poulet normal, dans une petite ville.
Pa, pardon, désolé. Let me jump back over here. Let me get this a little louder. Uh, yeah, okay. So this is, here we go. Laissez-moi.
Laissez-moi vous raconter l'histoire d'un poulet. Ses amis l'appellent Petit Poulet. Petit Poulet vit dans une petite maison de poulet normal, dans une petite ville normale. Il n'est ni grand, ni petit. Il n'est ni gros, ni maigre. Il n'est ni intelligent, ni stupide. Petit Poulet est un poulet tout à fait normal. Par une matinée tout à fait normale, Petit Poulet mange son petit déjeuner dans la cuisine. Il aime les toasts avec du beurre et le café à la crème. Il lit les nouvelles. Il voit une histoire terrifiante avec un titre terrifiant qui dit : "Le ciel est en train de tomber." Il a si peur qu'il laisse tomber son toast dans son café. Plouf! Le ciel est en train de tomber? Le ciel est en train de tomber? Je dois prévenir tout le monde! Crie Petit Poulet.
Okay, cool. So that's what we did yesterday. That was fun. I'm gonna just read it for me to catch up. Okay. Laissez-moi vous raconter l'histoire d'une poulet. Uh, let me show you the story of chicken, of a chicken. Ses amis appellent Petit Poulet. So, uh, his friends call him Petit Poulet. Petit Poulet vit dans une petite maison de poulet normale. So, uh, Petit Poulet lives in a small house, uh, of Chicken Normal. A small, a small house, Chicken Normal, dans une petite ville normale. Uh, let's see what the translation was on that. I can't remember. Lives in a normal little chicken house. Maison de poulet. Ah, sorry. I missed the connection there. Uh, petite maison de poulet, maison de poulet. Uh, maison de poulet normale, in fact. On fait. Okay. Dans une petite ville normale. In a little normal town. Okay, cool. Il n'est, uh, il n'est ni grand, uh, ni petit. He's not skinny. He's not fat or skinny. No, tall or short. Uh, il n'est ni gros, ni marg, margé? Uh, I forgot how to say this word. It's skinny though. Margé, margé? Uh, we'll have to listen to that again. Il n'est ni intelligent, ni stupide. Uh, so he's not smart or stupid. Et Petit Poulet est un pouli, poulet tout à fait normal. Uh, little chicken is a chicken totally normal. Okay, he's neither tall nor short. He's neither fat nor tall or thin. He's neither small nor stupid. Chicken Little is a completely normal chicken. Okay. Poulet normal. What is a poulet normal? I don't know. This is a kid's story. Come on. Uh, par une matinée tout à fait normale. Um, like always, like a normal day. Petit Poulet mange son petit déjeuner dans la cuisine. Petit Poulet mange son petit déjeuner dans la cuisine. So he, Petit Poulet eats his breakfast like normal in the kitchen. Oh no, he eats breakfast in the kitchen. Il aimait les toasts avec du beurre et le café à la crème. So he likes toast with butter and café and a coffee with cream. On a completely normal morning, Chicken Little is eating his breakfast in a chick, in the, in a chicken, in the kitchen. And he likes toast and butter, coffee and cream. Okay, we're doing okay on this comprehension and remembering. Okay. Il lit les nouvelles. Il lit les nouvelles. Uh, he reads the news. Il voit une histoire terrifi, terrifi, terrifiant, terrifiant. Uh, il voit une histoire terrifiant avec un titre terrifiant. Oh, and this is, this has the t, this does not, right? Il voit une histoire terrifiante avec un titre terrifiant qui, qui dit : "Le ciel est en train de tomber." Okay, so he reads the news. He sees, il voit, une histoire, a story, a terrifying story with a terrifying title. He sees, il voit, une histoire, a story, a terrifying story with a terrifying title. It says, the sky is falling, okay. He reads the news, he sees a terrifying story with a terrifying headline. Titre, uh, it says, oh, qui dit, qui dit? Uh, the sky is falling, okay. Il a si peur, qui, il a si peur qu'il lasse tomber son toast dans son café. Plouf. Um, yeah, I don't quite understand this one still, don't quite understand. Um, but it's, he has such fright, I think that's kinda what we're saying here. He has such fright qu'il lasse, he drops, uh, qu'il lasse, he lets his. Uh, something, something fall, his toast into his coffee. Plouf, le ciel, le ciel est en train de tomber, le ciel est en train de tomber? The sky is falling, the sky is falling. Je dois prévenir tout le monde. I must warn the world, everyone, crie petit poulet. Okay, so he is so scared that he drops his toast into the coffee. Il a si peur, that's, that's just gotta be, yeah. He has such fright is kind of where my brain goes for this, as a translation. Il a si peur, that he, qu'il drops. Lasse tomber? Um, so, that's cool. Uh, da da na na, so cool. We, um, that's a catch up from yesterday, let's just go ahead and listen to, um, oh wait, I don't have to scroll all the way up. Let's just go ahead and listen to the rest.
D'abord, il envoie l'histoire par courriel à ses mille amis les plus proches. Puis, il court dans la rue pour prévenir tous les autres.
Oh, that's, oh, that was the natural breakpoint. Okay, cool, well, that's, let's, let's get this guy, and then we'll listen to what we've heard so far. For memory sake, and then we'll be done for the day, cause that's my time. Uh, d'abord, il envoie l'histoire par courriel, courriel, à seize mille amis. Seize mille amis les plus proches. Oh gosh, uh, first, he sends story by. Uh, courriel, is it by mail? Um, uh, to all his friends, les plus proches. I don't know. Puis, il court dans la rue pour prévenir tous les autres. Um, okay, so puis, then, il court, he runs, dans la rue, uh, on the road, pour, uh, prévenir. To warn tous les autres, everyone else, tous les autres. Let's see how, how I did. First, oh, he emails the story, sends the story by email. Envoie l'histoire par courriel. Okay, haven't seen that before. Um, to his one thousand closest friends. Yeah, I thought mil was it, okay. À seize mille, wait, à seize, so like possess, or flexive here, his. No, wait, that's wrong, but it's his, yes, seize, and it's plural, I think, is that what that means? À seize mille amis, his thousand friends, les plus proches. Uh, and I guess this, les plus, uh, his, his best, I guess this is a follow-on, I've never seen this before. Les mille amis les plus proches. Probably need somebody to help me out with that one. Okay, then, he runs in the street to warn everyone else, we did pretty good. Puis, il court dans la rue pour prévenir tous les autres. Okay, fun stuff, let's listen to all that.
Laissez-moi vous raconter l'histoire d'un poulet. Ses amis l'appellent petit poulet. Petit poulet vit dans une petite maison de poulets normales, dans une petite ville normale. Il n'est ni grand, ni petit. Il n'est ni gros, ni maigre.
Maigre.
Il n'est ni intelligent, ni stupide. Petit poulet est un poulet tout à fait normal.
Tout à fait normal.
Par une matinée tout à fait normale, petit poulet mange son petit déjeuner dans la cuisine. Il aime les toasts avec du beurre et le café à la crème. Il lit les nouvelles. Il voit une histoire terrifiante avec un titre terrifiant qui dit, le ciel est en train de tomber. Il a si peur qu'il laisse tomber son toast dans son café. Plouf, le ciel est en train de tomber, le ciel est en train de tomber? Je dois prévenir tout le monde, crie petit poulet. D'abord, il envoie l'histoire par courriel à ses mille amis les plus proches. Puis, il court dans la rue pour prévenir tous les autres.
Yay. Tune in tomorrow to see what happens next. Um, or come to thefrenchexperiment.com/stories/chickenlittle. Okay, this is really fun though. Um, yeah, okay, I think I'm done. Uh, à bientôt, merci, au revoir. Uh, bye.